Who knows?
Things like that.
Like you just came off the job.
It's just no way.
Really?
It's not, it was not meant to be.
Oh, here. This is my.
Oh, good. I would try to stop the boss.
I happen to, I, I've been teaching music together classes. And I taught one out at the Ostervale Library just the other day. And I thought, this is what I wish.
Yeah, this will be on the back.
It's right in the middle of town.
You see it? A little circle. Yeah. Let me know, because I'm going to order a little soon.
Well, money, money, money is.
Tell me it is October 20th. That's my next.
It's an option. It's a choice to convince people. And my message is to have the staff wonderful, by the way. We have such a good library staff. We are so fortunate. But they can't do all those things they could do because they don't have. So it's like, we're not even getting the, the value out of the people that we have. Do you know what I'm saying? So.
Where was the original? So that's been the library for a hundred years. Where was the library before it was a science school?
I think it was the.
If you feel like you couldn't make an independent decision.
The historical society, that yellow, that one is a designated landmark.
Still waiting to see what they're going to do with that house. Because you picked that up.
One of those freak things, wow.
Yeah, I don't know what's going to happen there. So, you know, basically, what we were saying was, if you built a new building, you could move the building forward. That would have benefits to.
You don't want to make a positive recommendation.
The way the field is used behind you would benefit the neighbors. They have less exposure.
I refuse to yourself for number three. Y'all left me out the hallway to come back in.
Oh, why are you refusing yourself? Oh, okay. Yeah, 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 yeah. So we're going to actually, this one's going to be.
Went into the base.
Yeah, definitely keep you updated. I was there. Sure.
All right, so we'll move right along, man.
It's not like you take them home. So it's a lot, it's really discreet.
Well, you had a next sticker.
I'm putting, I'm putting in my. No, I'm not. I mean, it's.
All right. You want to go get them soon?
Yeah, I'll get them. Just kind of stay, stay within the window. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And I'll go.
You die, we fly.
Come on, man.
On the back will be the logo, you know, the flying grimy person.
That's good. I like it. Seasonal.
Yeah.
You can do that.
We're available 24/7.
Mm-hmm.
She made it.
Yeah, I mean, I went through it. I didn't, I was like.
And you know that road's.
You've been on the road. It's old again.
Yeah, yeah, there's some other places there that have problems, so, yeah.
There's a couple down. A little pain. Wind big. You got pace. At this room, at golf center move, brought back today, 1:30, emergency.
Well, at least, you know, you have, you have the information and it's.
You ready?
My wife, the good thing is my wife.
Phone's off.
Recording in progress.
Seeing as it's 7:03 PM, we're going to call to order the planning board meeting for Thursday, October 9th, 2025. Note that this meeting is being recorded for live broadcast and televised replay by Born TV. If anyone is audio or visual recording, please acknowledge at this time. Seeing none. The first order of business is the meeting minutes from September 11th and September 15th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, quick question. Can we take the both at the same time or one each?
Take them both at the same time.
And then I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from 9:11 and 9:15.
Motion from Jim.
Second.
Second from Liz.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions, comments?
I'll have to abstain from one of them.
Oh, that'll be hard then.
It's hard. Probably be easier to do them one at a time.
Just tell them the date, yeah, that's the same.
Yeah, 9:15, September 15th.
Mm-hmm.
I was excused, as was Jim, and as was Corinne.
Oh, yeah.
None of us were here, so.
Great. Any other comments or concerns? We'll take a roll call vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
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 Jim?
Yeah.
Liz?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
We're just doing the 11?
Both, as amended.
Oh, okay, so, all right. So, yes, and then abstain?
Yeah, yeah, yes with the abstentions.
Okay.
Yes with the abstention, Corinne.
Okay.
And the chair votes yes. Next on the agenda.
Chairman, I make a motion that we take number five, the application for special permits, 162025, out of order, place at number one on the list.
So moved. Second. Second from Dave. Any questions from the board? The audience? Seeing none? Take a roll call vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So I think next up will be 21.
Yeah, continue it to November 13th. You want to continue?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant would like to continue this special permit 162025 to our next scheduled meet. What, what is the meeting?
November 13th.
November, continue it to November 13th.
We have a motion to continue this to November 13th, second by Jim.
Clarification, is that a continuance? I thought you said you had to re-advertise.
No, continuance.
It's a straight continuance? It's a continuance, and we have to re-advertise.
Yes.
No further questions? Take a roll call vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jim? Liz?
Yes.
Dave? Dan? Corinne? Chair votes yes. So continued. Next up is application for site plan review, special permit 12-2025, 223 Main Street. The application is to raise the existing commercial and residential buildings and construct a mixed-use commercial multifamily residential building and standalone multifamily I believe we have a request to continue?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion that we continue this to November 13th.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Catherine. Any deliberation? We'll take a vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So continued. Next up is Spinnaker Road and Daniel Webster Lane. Review and make recommendation on the public road layout and acceptance. That's Tim Lyden.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen on the planning board. My name is Tim Lyden, and with the Town Engineering Department. Here with an uncommon item tonight. It's been a long time since someone's presented to the planning board of a project like this. So we received a petition for two roads to be accepted at the annual town meeting 2026 this past June. We have a full petition. We've gone through the checklist, embedded that. Spinnaker Lane and Daniel Webster Lane are located over in Pecassettwood subdivision. It was built in 19, or permitted in 1989, so we have a 35-plus year age on this, these We did have requested core samples. We have a road taking plan. We have D work. We have a title report from an attorney. We did create a new road acceptance policy back in April of 2024. And we are at the part of the process where the select board has sent this for your review to get the planning board's recommendation on taking the roads. So it's my responsibility to report how, what the deficiencies were for the cross-section of the road construction. And I will say that everything passed all the tests and everything looks good. I would just say the age and condition of the pavement is something that we'd be looking to do a betterment for. So I would, I would make, you know, I would, I would let you consider that, you know, this, these subdivision residents have already expressed their commitment to pursuing the betterment. So we have preliminary estimates now. We will, upon your recommend, positive recommendation, have a formal hearing with the select board in November. So with that, I will take any questions or comments.
Great, Corinne?
How, all the connecting roads, are those all public roads that connect to these roads?
So we own Spinnaker, like about, I think it's like 30 feet into this subdivision. Well, the subdivision starts like 30 feet into this roadway. It's like, it's like a old, old parent parcel. But yeah, we own the road leading right to it.
Any other questions for Mr. Lyden? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, if we're all good, I would make a motion that we make a positive recommendation to the select board.
Perfect, I second that.
Good, let's do it.
Motion by Liz, second by Catherine, to make a positive recommendation to the select board. Any further questions or comments? We'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman? Any questions, comments?
I'm sorry, any questions from the audience regarding these two roadways acceptance? Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Back to the board. Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Lyden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of nice to see one of these happen, you know?
Yes.
You might want to, Mr. Chairman, you might want to note that Jim Robinson refused to vote.
Just for the minutes, Mr. Robinson recused himself, and the board voted unanimously to make a positive recommendation to the select board.
You came in anyway. You figured it out.
Why should I?
Okay. Let's see. Next up is application for site plan review, SPR number 03-2021A. Do we have some information on this from the engineers?
This is for 431 to 471 Sienak Highway?
Yes, it is.
Yes, the attorney representing the applicant has requested a continuance to November?
August 23rd?
October 23rd.
Yeah. Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
Do we have a signed waiver for time constraints?
The 65-day deadline is in November.
Oh, so we're good.
Yeah, we're good. But he will do that if it goes further.
Great, so.
Chairman, I think you make a motion to continue this.
Hold on.
Sorry?
Chris?
I just spoke to a gentleman who said he was the attorney, and he had no idea of what I was talking about. Because I went out there to tell the people, the ones that were here, continued. And he was here, and he had no idea that this was requested to be continued. So did you actually get a call from him, or did you get a call from somebody else claiming it was him?
We have an email confirmation from him.
Email? Okay.
Yes, but if he's out there, I don't know.
He was out there, but I told him it was continued, so he said, fine.
Okay, yeah.
He didn't know if we would do that. Do you know what I mean?
Well, that's, it was kind of surprising that he said.
Yeah, no, I agree, but, you know.
Okay.
Do you want me to check to see if he's still out there?
I just came in, there was nobody out there.
Right, like I said, I went out to tell the people, the ones that were continued, and he, so he left, so.
Yeah, okay.
So on that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we continue special permit 032021A to October 23rd.
Motion by Dan, second by Jim. Any further questions, comments? Take a roll call vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Motion to continue? Yes. Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Continue to October 23rd. Next up is 317 Barlow's Landing Road. The application is to continue the local permitting process for site plan review number 08-2024, following the Cape Cod Commission development of regional impact decision to construct a wireless telecommunications facility consisting of a 120-foot-tall monopole style tower inside a 35-foot by 70-foot, 2,625-square-foot fenced-in compound. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Francis Parisi, attorney representing the applicant, Vertex Towers LLC and Verizon Wireless. With the chair's permission, I'd love to share my screen. I have a presentation and photos and maps and all kinds of good stuff.
Certainly.
I didn't bring popcorn, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see. Push that button. It works so better. Yeah. Funny head. Marches in, two weeks in April. Say hope. There it is, right there. Okay. I'm going to get bigger. As was written in the notice, we are here tonight seeking site plan approval for what's, your zoning bylaw calls a wireless communications facility, what the rest of the world calls a cell tower. We're at 317 Barlow's Landing Road. This site has an immense amount of history. You guys all remember, I was sitting in the back row of the planning board exactly a year ago in October, because we applied to the planning board back in either September or October last year. And we, we were immediately referred to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact through process and procedure. We had to reapply to them and finally got a approval as a development of regional impact back in August. Through that process, we, in speaking with planning staff, determined that we also need to go to the zoning board. We were in front of the zoning board last week and got continued, but they just asked for some more clarification information. In addition, even though the Cape Cod Commission does extensive environmental impact, we also have a minor encroachment on a wetlands buffer. So we have applied to a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission. That was last week as well. And they, actually, they've seen, ready to approve it, but there was some issue with the DEM numbering system, or DEP numbering system, so it was continued. But my suspicion is that's going to get approved because of all the work that the Cape Cod Commission, in consultation with the Conservation's agent, had done. By way of introduction, Vertex is what we call a wireless infrastructure developer. We don't provide cellphone service. We're essentially real estate developers. We've done quite a bit of work on Cape Cod. We have two sites that, one's under construction, one was approved and will be instructed probably in the spring. In Thalmouth, we've built sites in Wellfleet, and we have other pending applications in Harwich and Yarmouth. We have, I've been doing this for about 20 years, and I've been pretty much in every town on Cape Cod over the last 20 years with folks as part of the Vertex team. So we're quite involved here. We, the only variance we need from the zoning board, this is an approved use in the district that we're in. We're in R40 residential district. However, it just says that there's a height limitation of 40 feet. And for a lot of very technical reasons, that's something that is just technically impossible and creates an unnecessary hardship. So we've applied for a variance for that. There was also some question as to whether or not the lot requires a frontage variance. I don't think so. We spoke to planning staff about it, and I, and I've tried to get an opinion out of the zoning enforcement officer, but my suspicion is that's not that, that big an issue. It's either going to be deemed a nonconform, a prior existing nonconforming lot, or we'll get the, the frontage variance from the town. Verizon, as you know, is one of the biggest cellphone companies in the United States. They already have several facilities already in Bourne, on existing facilities. There's several existing towers along the Route 28 corridor. But really what they're trying to do is get better coverage to the west of Route 28 going towards Pecassett and Monument Beach. I filed a very extensive application package, I'm sure you all read it. I supplemented it last week with some, not, about last month, with some additional information that was required as part of the Cape Cod Commission process. And I'm not going to go through it in great detail, but I have it all up here on the screen if you need to see it. In addition, we got staff memo yesterday, and I have a couple of updates to the plans to just respond to some issues raised by staff, not terribly significant. I don't know that I need to talk to the planning board about the need for wireless telecommunications. We've gotten a lot of very positive feedback from the town. The Cape Cod Commission hires consultants to verify all the radio frequency data. I know the zoning board was asked a lot more questions about that. But we're actually responding to a lot of pressure to build better cellphone coverage throughout all of Cape Cod. We've been working with many cities and towns. There's been a lot of news. Just last week, there was a letter sent by your state rep to the Verizon and AT&amp;T to improve coverage throughout all of Cape Cod, because the demand is there. And what's happened is, when I first started doing this many, many years ago, we thought it was a mobile technology. And we thought people were going to use it in their cars. And so we were focused on Route 6 and Route 28 and, and 6A. But as we found over the last several years, it's becoming a residential technology. And people are using it in their homes. People are, you know, and over the last several years, as people are working from home and trying to educate from home, it's become a residential technology. So it's certainly more challenging to provide a residential service without having significant impact on residential neighborhoods. We, these sites are automatically deemed a development of regional impact, and so we went through a very extensive review process with the Cape Cod Commission. They engage all signs of experts, both biologists and environmental experts, but also radio frequency experts, to confirm all the data, and they have issued approval of that. In addition, the town planner, Ms. Copeland, and other folks who are involved in that process, to indicate our compliance with the town's master plan and local comprehensive plan to, because I think everyone needs, recognized the need for better telecommunications, both in Bourne and throughout Cape Cod. We submitted an immense amount of technical data from radio frequency engineers showing really what the coverage objective is. Like I said, Verizon already has pretty good coverage along Route 28 corridor, but as you get farther west, going towards Pecassett and the coastline, you know, there's just gaps in coverage. And that was all heavily documented by Verizon and then heavily reviewed by the Cape Cod Commission's efforts. And we submitted lots of both software analysis and actual, what they call drive test data to support all that. This facility that we're going at is not only very appropriate this, but also one of the only alternatives. We, we've spent an immense amount of time over the last several years looking for alternatives. We knew that there's existing wireless infrastructure along the 28 corridor that Verizon is already utilizing. But as you go farther west, you know, and the area becomes way more residentially developed. And you can see from this map, this is a map showing all of the, the lots in Western Bourne going towards Pecassett. And there's really very few lots of size or that are commercially used that would be appropriate for this type of facility. And we contacted many landlords. We, there was a church across the street in Pecassett. I think, I said last time it was a Catholic church, but I think it's a Baptist church. And we spent immense amount of time working with them. But that land, as you can imagine, as you go north, going towards the wet part of Pecassett, was just undevelopably wet. But we spent a year, went to the Conservation Commission, trying to get that. We had extensive conversations with the golf course next door about citing the facility on their facility, but they weren't interested in putting a cell tower on their property. So the site that we focused on is really the only alternative that we could find. It's set substantially back off of Barlow's Landing Road. When you come through Pecassett, and I guess I'd call it downtown Pecassett, there's a commercial building with a little strip plaza, there's the fire station, there's a church across the street, there's a big recreational facility. And we're set substantially far back that, I think it's about 700, 800 feet off of Barlow's Landing Road. And, and surrounded by wetlands to the east and south, and also the train tracks that go up along north-south, parallel to Route 28. The lot itself does not have frontage on Barlow's Landing Road, but there's a previously existing access easement crossing the town property all the way to Barlow's Landing Road. It's, this lot, even though it's in a residential zone, has been used for light industry for many, many, many years. And I say that because it clearly predates the zoning ordinance with respect to that. It was a former welding shop. It got acquired by another individual, basically to store his boat. But it's, it's a lot that's been used, and the access driveway has been there for many, many years. We're not proposing any new curb cuts, no utility runs, because there's existing utilities that already service the site, and there's also sufficient access from Barlow's Landing Road. The facility itself is really quite benign. It's, when I say benign, it's about 35 by 70. It's a fenced-in compound that will house some telecommunications equipment and a foundation for the tower. We had very extensive discussions with the Cape Cod Commission regarding the proximity to wetlands. It actually made more sense to push it closer to the wetlands and away from the residential neighborhoods on the other side of the, the train tracks. And because of the small wetlands encroachment, the, and it's actually not a wetlands encroachment, it's a buffer encroachment. We have, the Cape Cod Commission required us to do substantial wetlands mitigation. This lot was developed long before the Wetlands Protection Act, and, but, and so there's been some activity in the buffer. And as part of the process, the Cape Cod Commission is asking us to replant some vegetation in the wetlands buffer to revegetate the wetlands with wetlands appropriate. And then also to designate a no-cut zone where the actual wetlands are along the eastern border, to make sure that there's no more activity in the wetlands. The other thing that came up as part of the process, and Sean actually raised it yesterday, the Cape Cod Commission actually asked us to put a stockade fence around the property, around the facility, as opposed to a chain link fence. And I have some updated drawings that show that, just to provide some visual screening. In addition, we're doing some plantings along the wetland side, going towards the golf course in the east, to just, to build up the vegetative buffer along the eastern part of the property. The, the tower itself is what we call a monopole. I think there's one already in town, and similar to what we just, under construction in Thalmouth, and seems to be the design of choice. It's a single pole with antennas mounted at the top. All the cabling from the antennas run down the middle of the pole, and, and then come out the bottom to connect to the telecommunications equipment on the bottom. And then come out the bottom to connect to the telecommunications equipment on the bottom. This facility itself will be 120 feet tall, which is, you know, something that we do a lot of research on to make sure that it's appropriate for the location and also provides a requisite telecommunications signal. And like I said, that was all verified by the Cape Cod Commission's experts. And one of the things that we need to do as well is even though we're building this for Verizon, I think your zoning bylaw and the Cape Cod Commission requires us to make sure that we build it with sufficient height and structural capacity for multiple telecommunications antennas. We are quite confident that at some point, AT&amp;T will want to come on this or T-Mobile or other telecommunications companies. So we build it with the height and structural integrity to accommodate multiple telecommunications carriers if and when they come to this facility. And like I said, we, I spelled adequate wrong. We were required by the Cape Cod Commission to put fencing on. It didn't show up in the drawings that you have, but we've since added them to the drawings. And then the other thing that staff raised with respect to the property is that we add no trespassing signs. Those are already on there. They just weren't on the plan set that you got, but they'll be on the plan set. And they're quite small signs. They're just on the fence. They're, you know, two by three, about the size of a real estate sign. I'm just saying no trespassing and providing some OSHA regulation-type safety measures and also a contact number. And these towers are quite safe. We've built many of them throughout Cape Cod in close proximity to other uses. There was a big article in the Provincetown paper about a facility that was similar to this that was built right up against the Public Forest HD facility where the police and fire are in Truro. We built them very close to Route 6 and other major thoroughfares and other recreational facilities throughout the Cape. And they're engineered very specific to Cape Cod. I guess we're getting an nor'easter this weekend and they take all that data into account. We haven't actually designed the foundation yet because after we get planning board and zoning board approval, we'll go back, do some geotechnical analysis. We all know it's probably sand, but we don't do that in advance. And then we design a foundation very specific to the location and very specific to the wind requirements for a place like Cape Cod. So it's very county-specific and very site-specific. And it's done very compliant with all the engineering and building code standards in Massachusetts. And these are actually very safe from a radio frequency perspective. The technology is not designed to cover all of Cape Cod or even all of Borne, but a very small area in the Pecassett neighborhood going down towards Monument Beach. It's a very low-powered transmission. And the reason is it's a two-way communication. You're using your cellphone to talk to the nearest cell tower and you're putting up your head like this. And this is a very low-powered transmission. So the corresponding transmission back is equally low-powered. By way of example, I was interested in the weather. So I actually listened to Wbz for the first time in a long time today. Wbz gets broadcast out of Boston and that broadcasts out at 50,000 watts. And you can still get it down on Cape Cod because that's still designed to cover, you know, all of Massachusetts going up into Hampshire and going down into Rhode Island. This broadcasts out at about 100 watts. It's designed to cover a very small area, a couple of square miles and around Borne. So it's a much lower-powered transmission and with all FCC applicable safety requirements. And we submitted a lot of data to the Cape Cod Commission and to the town to support that. And like I said, what it's designed to do is fill in the gaps in coverage in Pecassett, you know, the Seaboard here, Monument Beach and the neighborhoods. It's not perfect. It's not covering all of the gaps in coverage, but, you know, we do the best we can with the technology limits, with the height limits imposed by all the different entities, Cape Cod and the town of Borne and all the other land use restrictions that we have to deal with. But everyone wants to know what it's going to look like. Back in November, as part of this process and the Cape Cod Commission process, we did a visibility demonstration. We put a balloon up in the air. I think you guys all got noticed. I made sure Jennifer and Sean knew about it. I put an ad in the paper, Cape Cod Times and the, what's the other one, the Enterprise. We notified all the butters that would have gotten notice to this hearing and others. And we submitted a photo package to the Cape Cod Commission and to you guys as part of the supplemental application. I just want to jump to that real quick. We engage engineers through this. We don't do it ourselves. They certify that the height of the balloon was actually taller than 120 feet. They measured the string. So the string was 125 feet, so the balloon was a little bit taller than that. And they took pictures from all around. And what this map shows is where there's some visibility or where there's no visibility, the green being where there's some visibility to it, the red being where there's no visibility. And the yellow is where there's some partial visibility, maybe through the trees or something like that. And given the density, they actually took a lot of pictures along the Pecassett corridor there, right along Barlow's Landing Road and some of the residential neighborhoods behind it. And I'm really just going to focus on like 1, 2, 3, and 4, which are the closest visual points, and then maybe 9 and 13. But this is taken from the entrance driveway. The fire station's right to your left, just off the photograph. And, you know, you can see that it's going to have some visibility as you look down the driveway. This is what it'll look like if they'll build out. And what's interesting about this picture is that there are very tall light poles providing lights to the ball field. And it looks like they're the same height, but because the tower itself, those light poles are probably 50 feet tall and the tower's 120 feet tall. But because it's set back so far from Barlow's Landing Road, it kind of mitigates the visual impact. Down closer to the post office, again, it's going to be a little bit visible over the post office. But as you can see, it's kind of proportionate to the other tall structures there, including the light poles at the ball field. From across the street where the church entrance is, you can kind of see the fire station there. Again, some visibility and then over the fire station, some visibility. But, you know, given all the other commercial activity, it's probably the, not only the most appropriate, but the only place that we could look at, we could locate to cite this type of facility. What did I say, 9? This is taken from the end of the railroad tracks looking south towards the property. And there's some visibility over the trees, but it really blends in with the tree line. And then where's another? There was, what did we say, 9 and 13? This was taken from the entrance to the Borne Housing Authority complex. And some visibility right there, but you can see there's, it's set quite a bit of ways off of that main street there. And then, where did we say, 13? This is the cul-de-sac, just on the other side of the train tracks. And there's some visibility there, but, you know, it tends to blend in with the trees. And what this is showing me here is that you're seeing the top, maybe 30 feet of the tower, not 120 feet. And this was done in November when all the leaves are off the trees. And I think the leaves will fill in during the foliage season. So, you know, I can't make a cell tower invisible, but I think we picked a pretty good location to mitigate the visual impact as much as possible. And that was certainly concurred with the Cape Cod Commission. We got a staff report from the Cape Cod Commission to make sure we're consistent with all their objectives. And those sort of dovetail with what the town and the planning board is tasked to deal with as well, that there's no significant environmental impact. And they did immense amount of work with biologists to make sure that there's no impact on the wetlands, that there's sufficient screening, that there's no impact on historical resources, that stormwater management is contained on the property. And that there's certainly a great benefit to the town with increased cellphone coverage. And by getting the development of regional impact, the Cape Cod Commission is essentially saying, you know, the great benefit to this outweighs the minimal to no impact that it has on the community. They engaged a consultant to look at the package, both from a technical perspective and from a land use perspective. And, you know, the consultant agreed with all our data and confirmed that not only it was the minimum height necessary to achieve the coverage objective, that it was a necessary facility and that it was appropriately chosen to minimize the visual impact. I'm sure you read it. I gave you guys a 30-page memo about, I went through these zoning bylaw in all respects. I got about 30 slides here showing it. But I think, you know, this type of facility is really easy for you guys. There's no impact on traffic. There's no impact on wetlands. There's, you know, there's no steep slopes. Everything is set back substantially from Barlow's Landing Road. So as you come down Barlow's Landing Road, you're not going to see any of the equipment or the storage. To ensure that, the Cape Cod Commission may just put the stockade fence up. There's already sufficient electric power. We have to run another upgraded power service, but no additional poles coming off of Barlow's Landing Road. The site is actually, because we're not doing much civil work other than the compound itself, we don't have to build a driveway or take down any trees. So there might be six weeks of construction activity and then it's unmanned. Someone might come by once a month to make sure the fence is intact, but all the equipment is remotely monitored so that there's no traffic, there's no impact on the neighborhood from a pedestrian safety perspective or anything like that. So I think it's quite easy, from a site plan review perspective, to see that it really has minimal to no impact on the neighborhood. And the last thing I'm going to say is the federal government, for a very long time, has been very involved in wireless infrastructure development. Back almost 30 years ago, the government adopted laws to encourage this type of infrastructure development. They, that's back in the time when we had one telephone company, AT&amp;T. And they broke it up into multiple telecommunications companies to encourage competition. And the government knew that we were going towards a wireless world. So they adopted laws that didn't say that you have to say yes, but they did say that you can't say no without sufficient reason. You can't say, "We don't want cell coverage in Borne." Or, "My Verizon phone, my AT&amp;T phone works, therefore we don't want Verizon." Or, you know, that, and it just says that your regulations can't have the effect of prohibiting telecommunications. And that's something that, you know, we've, several of the courts in Massachusetts and throughout the country have had to interpret. And the courts are quite favorable to this type of activity, given the great benefit and the lack of any kind of detriment. So I'm going to take a very deep breath and say, I would request that the board approve the site plan. I know we still have to get the height variance from the zoning board. I think the conservation commission is ready to sign off once they get the DEM number from the conservation, from the state. And we would ask that they approve it so we can continue to move through the process. I got lots of maps and plans and anything, if you guys want to look at anything, but...
Thank you. Catherine.
Okay, go ahead. I was the reviewer. That's why I was just going to offer my thoughts on this. So I did quite a bit of looking at this. I drove around to look at all the place, you know, make sure I understood what the photos were showing. Just so everybody understands, because I think we know this area fairly well. It's basically located at the back of the Pecassett Golf Course, if that helps. You know, I think people know the Pecassett baseball area there and then that weird welding thing that he's talking about, there's been a welding. So it's kind of, it's already very developed. And there's quite a bit of good screening as you drive around, like all the pictures he was showing. It seems to me that, you know, that's, the visual is not disturbing. It also is going to offer emergency coverage to town forest and the golf course, which I think is an important safety thing, especially because the town forest is used quite a bit for recreation. If you're a mountain biker and you fall off your bike, it's nice to know that you could get help. The only question I had was that access road is in pretty bad shape. And I don't really know who maintains it. Does anybody know that?
The access road is actually on town property. It's the same road that is utilized to get to the ball field.
Yeah, I know. It's never been great.
We don't care because, and the reason is, from our perspective, it's much better than usually what we have. And for our purposes, access is really for construction. We need to bring in some concrete trucks. We need to bring in a crane to stack the tower. And the tower comes on the back of a big flatbed and it's not 120 feet. It comes in sections that get slipped onto each other. But it's certainly good enough for us. The, a landowner has never complained about it. I don't think he's got any designs to resuscitate the commercial business there. So, you know.
Okay.
It's good enough for the ball field. It's good enough for us.
I've never known how that was done. And it's just, it's okay. I mean, it's just, it's not horrible if you can't get through it. But, you know, it just occurred to me as you were driving back and forth, you might be disturbed by that, but apparently not. So that was really all I had, other than, I know we did get some correspondence regarding the RF exposure and the fact that it's near a ball field. And, you know, what I would say about that is that, yes, it's fairly near, but that ball field and that playground, especially the ball field, are not used year-round. They're not occupied all the time. It was next to a school or preschool or something. I might have greater concerns, but, you know, I think it's worth thinking about, but I don't think it's a, something that would cause me to say no. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Catherine.
I, thank you for that, Liz. And I am concerned about the fall zone with the ball field. That's an issue definitely for me.
Fall zone? What does that mean?
Just if, just if anything, if anything happened to the tower.
Oh, it won't fall on the ball field. It's far away from there.
You don't think it absolutely?
It won't even come close.
It won't even come close. It's, 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 no, that's, that's not, that's not an issue.
Been a while since I've seen a cell tower fall.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, sure.
One, I don't like the word "fall zone." I've never actually said that because it implies something that doesn't happen. We don't meet tower height setback, meaning if it ever toppled over, we are less than 60 feet from the, we are less than 120 feet from the property line. But we're not less than 120 feet from the playground. There's like an area where there's, that's not utilized. It's kind of like behind the fence. I'll also point out that in this town, they have light poles at the ball field right next door. They have, you have light poles at the football field. Mass Maritime built a huge complex. And, because the question came up at the zoning board. And we've compiled lots of pictures. You know, these tend to go towards recreational facilities because they're away from residential facilities. I think your zoning bylaw encourages us to use anything that's tall, if there was something tall and would have the structural integrity. So from a radio perspective, we've put these things on residential buildings. As you go closer to Boston, the tallest structures are the residential buildings. I did a project in Worcester not that long ago where the only tall buildings in town outside of the downtown core were the public housing authority buildings. So we put antennas on all the public housing authority buildings. Every hospital has antennas on them because they tend to be the tallest buildings in the area. So, you know, in some areas, if there's tall church steeples, we've put them in. So, you know, people have gotten over the concern with respect to radio frequency exposure. And, you know, this technology was actually developed on Cape Cod, which is really interesting. The first radio transmission was in Woofleet at Marconi Beach. And we built two towers in Woofleet because the ones that Marconi used were long gone. But, you know, it's something that we've been living with for a long time. And like I said, these are all low-powered as opposed to, you know, those big broadcast towers that you drive up by Needham, Mass. Those are thousand-foot towers and they're trying to broadcast, you know, TV and FM and AM radio. This is just a much higher frequency and therefore a much lower power output. And, you know, we put antennas, I, the church I go to has, it's a 150-foot steeple. And there's two sets of antennas that I go to. There are other antennas and church steeples on Cape Cod. There's one in Yarmouth, there's one in Barnstable. So, you know, if there was a big tall church steeple, we'd have used it. But as you can imagine, there's really not that much tall in Barnstable that we can use, you know, Borne that we can use. But, you know, the structure itself is no different than some of the other things. And it's very designed very specifically to be safe.
Well, and as you pointed out, there are probably four or five light poles there that, you know, if they fell over, it'd be worse. And like many things in modern life, we have to make trade-offs, you know? I mean, it's just not a clear, you know, there's risks all over. It's a risky world, Catherine. It's a risky world, Catherine.
It really is. Thank you, Liz. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Parisi. Is there any other questions? We'll start with Dan.
Dave.
It's a quick one. Just for the record, could you confirm there's no residential structure within the so-called fall zone?
I can show you that.
There really isn't.
That's good enough for me.
Yep. Dan?
Closeless houses across the street, I mean, across the tracks.
The existing building, the welding shop, is that going to stay there?
Yeah, we have nothing to do with that. That's going to stay there.
Just one question. You also mentioned that the Mass Maritime, their light towers, they're exempt from town and local zoning, so just in future, future statements, you don't have to bring those up. State and federal government are exempt from local control?
No, I understand that, but I just mentioned from a safety perspective.
I'm just saying that they're exempt from us. The other question I have is, for the purpose of public safety, access to the tower, will you be willing to give 911 dispatch, Barnstable County Dispatch and the Bourne Fire and Police access to the tower for their signaling?
And the answer is yes. If you're going to write a condition to that, I would just put in the word "reasonable," and we'll work with them. We've worked with them and other public safety many, many times, and the only way is I say "reasonable" is because we kept, saved the place for the rent-paying customers, but if you said free of charge, we'd give that. And it kind of dovetails, to be perfectly honest, so...
The reason I ask is because in the Pecassett, My Beach area, Chris Farrell would also probably back me up. Fire and Police, their 911 signaling and the radio dispatch into that area is in a hollow. It's weak at best, so to be able to get the additional antenna service into that area would greatly improve the 911 coverage for the town of Bourne.
Yeah, we have a kind of a standard municipal agreement. We don't want you or the fire chief climbing the tower, but you know, just certain things like insurance.
Just as a condition, I just want to make sure that you work with the town of Bourne and Barnstable County Dispatch.
And like I said, it kind of dovetails with what we try to do.
I just want to make sure we put that on the table, that's all. Thank you.
Great point, Dan, because I was tasked to go out and find a tower when we didn't have reception, and a private person in North Falmouth was willing to do it at the time. Technically, Barnstable County was able to figure out a different spot, which was on a public building. We didn't have to do that, but the fact that it's there in case things change is a great asset to the town, so...
And our, just so you have an understanding, the town of Bourne, 911 dispatch, every time we have a building and they don't get the coverage, they ask to put the repeaters in for the local businessperson to make sure that they get the coverage. So I just want to make sure that we're working with the local businessman and the local provider to be able, we get the coverage, public safety.
Absolutely. It's like, we've worked with many cities and towns and that.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
I was just wondering, I remember back, we worked with the base on a flight path that they use regularly, and then they also had emergency flight paths for the post guard. Did we verify that this is not in any of those flight paths?
Yeah, as part of the application package, we submitted what's called a toe air analysis, which is just a determination that we have no impact on air navigation. We're at 120 feet, which sounds tall, but it's way under FCC regulations, and it's very specific. They look at the flight path from the airport, which is, I guess, part in Bourne, and they look at the way the runways are, and the runways don't actually come in this direction. There are actually taller facilities closer to the airport. I think the tower along 28, kind of just north of Barlow's Landing Road, is about 160 or 170 feet tall.
Yeah, I was just worried about the coast guard one. I think it's actually in the town bylaw when we show that flight path.
It was.
It was, but I think that was recent, too. I think, I think the feds pulled back on that, the zone that we had for that. They pulled it back because flying is a lot different than it was back when those were...
Well, that was, that was fairly recent that we did that.
Yeah, but if we have any jets flying at 100 feet again, it's 9/11 again, so let's hope that that never happens. I don't think we have to worry about it. I actually think that this is probably, if you had to pick a site, it's probably one of the better ones.
It really is, when you look around.
Dan, thank you for bringing that up. That was a really, that was a really good idea. Thank you.
Make sure we got it covered.
That was good.
Anyone else from the board? Have any comments or questions for Attorney Parisi? We'd like to open to the public. If you would like to comment or ask a question, please step up and give your name and...
They were here for another one of the...
What do you call it, elector?
Sounds like a wonderful plan. And I think that the flight concern is good because there's a lot of like small crafts that people are using now, and my concern was the baseball field with the kids. God forbid if something did fly into the antenna and it's in the fall zone, how would we protect the kids? That was my only concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to comment their question? All right, seeing and hearing done, we'll close the public comment section and go back to the board.
Yeah, I am. I just want to make sure I have the condition correct. So let me just read what I think it might, it will be in you.
My, my suggestion.
Yeah, okay. So provide Barnstable County 911 dispatch, Bourne Fire and Police, reasonable access? Is that the decision?
It's telecommunications.
Okay, so I'll add that on there.
That's fair.
Does that sound, yeah, everybody understands what I'm saying? All right. Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed this project, and the applicant Vertex Towers LLC proposes to construct a wireless communication facility consisting of a 120-foot, excuse me, monopole style tower inside a 35-by-70 fenced compound, carrier antennas, concrete equipment pads, and all associated ground equipment located at 317 Barlow's Landing Road, map 43.2 parcel 51. The project is located in an R40 district, and it is in allowed use under section 2220. Mr. Chairman, based on the planning board's review of the exhibits, testimony of applicants, experts, witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the planning board has found that the project is consistent with the town of Bourne zoning bylaw, section 1230 site plan review. Therefore, I move to approve site plan review number 082024 in accordance with the following terms. Findings: Communications tower is in allowed use under section 2220, specified as other customary accessory uses. The extension or alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than is the existing non-conforming use. Two, the parcel consists of 1.02 acres. There is an existing 1,144 square foot commercial building on the parcel. This building and its use will not change with the proposed plan. Three, this plan has been reviewed by the Cape Cod Commission under development of regional impact and was approved by the commission on August 14, 2025 with condition. Terms: All documents, plans submitted as part of the Cape Cod Commission review packets, along with all documents and plans submitted to the planning board, shall be incorporated into this decision and is subject to use as enforcement of this decision. Any deviation requires resubmital and approval by the planning board. Conditions: One, stake the limit of the disturbed work area and wetland areas before construction and maintain throughout construction. Two, prior to issuance of a use permit, an as-built plan must be submitted to the planning board showing all appurtenances above and below ground. Three, Knox padlock interlocked with the owner's padlock or Knox box, excuse me, Knox box required for the gated area. Four, prior to issuance of a building permit, obtain the following approvals and permits: A, BES permit from the fire department; B, propane storage and use permit from the fire department; C, approval of variance for height from the zoning board of appeals; D, approval of notice of intent from the conservation commission; Five, provide no trespassing sign; Six, abandonment or decommissioning. A, financial surety for decommissioning shall be provided prior to a use permit. The surety shall be provided either through an escrow account, bond, or otherwise in the amount and form acceptable to town council, but in no event to exceed more than 125% of the cost of removal. The amount shall include removal, disposal, and remediation of the landscape, and shall include a mechanism for prorating removal costs as they may be affected by inflation or changes to disposal regulations. The estimate shall be prepared by a qualified engineer, excuse me. B, the owner or operator shall physically remove the installations no more than 150 days after the date of discontinued operations. C, the owner or operator shall notify the inspector of buildings and town planner by certified mail of the proposed date of discontinued operations and plans for removal. D, decommissioning shall consist of physical removal of all components, including but not limited to structures, equipment, security barriers, and transmission lines from the site; disposal of all solid and hazardous waste in accordance with local, state, and federal waste disposal regulations; stabilization or revegetation of the site as necessary to minimize erosion. The inspector of buildings may allow the owner or operator to leave landscaping or designated below-grade foundations in order to minimize erosion and disruption of vegetation. And then condition seven, provide Barnstable County 911 dispatch, Bourne Fire and Police with reasonable access.
Second.
Second by Dan. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, take a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, come back to the board for a vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Catherine?
Upstee.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Congratulations. Thank you. You guys are a lot friendlier to the zoning board, that's for sure. I'm sorry for the tough time. Chairman? Yes. With nothing left on the agenda, we'd like to thank town of Bourne and the best board I've served on. With that, I can make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that. Dan? Seconded by Jim? Amanda?
Amanda? Yeah?
Motion to adjourn.
I think she already did adjourn.
Just say, just...
Say yes.
I'm sorry, yes. Sorry.
Catherine?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dan?
Upstee.
Liz?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Changed her name.
I'm Dan now.
Bye.
I gotta show you something.
Bye.
Bye. John, did my name change because of this?